I'm going to go ahead and call our meeting in order for September the 10th for our Pickens County Council. Want to welcome everybody here. Thank you so much for taking the time to be here as we take on the task of talking about and working through the business of the county. At this time, I'd like to turn this over to Councilman Hudson for our invocation and pledge.
Our most gracious head, my Father, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight to conduct the business of the county. Lord, just lead us and guide us in everything we do and say here tonight. It will be ultimately for your glory. Lord, bless our first responders as we face a hurricane in South Carolina. Lord, just everybody involved in that, Lord, just pray for their safety and bless them. Lord, just be with us and lead and guide us in everything we do and say, and I pray this in Jesus Christ's name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice on all.
Thank you, Councilman Hudson. Once again, we do welcome you guys here and thank you so much for taking the time to be here. Councilman Hendricks is, was at a business meeting this evening. He's running late, so he wanted to, he will be here, but we didn't want to, we wanted to be cognizant of everybody's time and go ahead and begin. At this time, we'll enter into time for our public forum. This is your opportunity to give feedback to the council on issues that you deem important. Of course, it's limited to three minutes in time. I also, I did want to mention that, you know, it seems like this is the only time that we get a chance to listen to you guys, but we don't. We're available by cell phone, email, and if we need extra time in between this and executive, we will always take it. So at this time, Madam Clerk, if you'll please call our first speaker.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, I call Franklin Reynolds.
Thank you. I'd just like to say, I oppose any millage increase that we may be seeing. I think we need to do a better job of managing what we have. I also feel that we need to come back into Sister City as in focus those efforts on the fire departments. We need more uniformity across the county and our fire departments. I'd also like to focus on getting the Central Royal Fire District operating on its own and dropping that contract with the city of Central. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Steve Haney.
At your last committee of the whole meeting, you discussed sister city agreement with another county going back to all this Carl's Jr. stuff. And we've discussed this in the past. You don't need a sister city to make deals with German companies. All this is just another way to spend money and have an excuse to take vacations. Drop it. You dropped it before. You took it out of the budget. Leave it out of the budget. Let this whole sister city thing die.
Thank you, Mr. Haney.
Mr. Chairman and members of council, this can place the public forum.
Thank you. This time, we'll move on to the approval of minutes. So we have, we need a motion to approve the minutes for our August 13th, 2018 special call meeting and then, excuse me, for our meeting on August 13th and then the special called meeting, August 20th. Motion by Councilman Feimster, second by Councilman Bowers. Is there any discussion on the minutes? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And that carries. Now, let's go to item number four and the administrators' report. Mr. Wilson.
Yes, Mr. Chairman, thank you. First, I'd like to remind the council and members of the public that we have our litter blitz on Friday, September 21st. We'll begin at 8:00. Members of the council and the public are invited to attend. Anybody that wants to participate can contact the administration office. We'll actually coordinate the scheduling for you and so forth. Second, I'd like to ask the council to consider adding economic development, a contract issue, executive session, Project Print. And third, I got Mr. Denise Quine to take it again tonight. She's going to bring up that page on a couple of issues going on in Pickens County.
Good afternoon, gentlemen. I'm going to go in with the storms and sun. I just wanted to reiterate that Pickens County was notified by DHEC on Friday that we had our first case of West Nile virus. It was a human case, not a dead bird that was found. In the city of Eastlake, DHEC advised us because it was a human case, they recommended that we sprayed the infected area. Immediately, Mr. Wilson contacted the city of Eastlake and collaboration began. Clemson University was advised and they reached out to all the beekeepers in the area that was to be sprayed so that they could cover their bees or remove their bees. We held a press conference with local media to alert the public. Because of this, I wanted to thank Jamie Burns, who's our PIO, Megan Wallace, who's the PIO for city of Eastlake, and Tasha Todd for their due diligence and collaborating together in getting out the same cohesive message to everyone on Facebook and Twitter. I'll let the administrator talk about that, but my next topic will be this little known thing called Hurricane Florence. Her National Weather Service, we are to be impacted probably about Thursday afternoon with 30 mile an hour winds and one to two inches of rain. Right now, that's what they're predicting because it has been, it's gone east and it's going more toward North Carolina. We received a request from South Carolina Fire Fighter Mobilization for a Type II Swiftwater Flood Response Team. We are deploying 10 of our Swiftwater team members to Columbia tomorrow. They're being to report by 2:00 tomorrow for seven days. The equipment deployment will be four trucks, a communications trailer, one trailer with two inflatable Swiftwater boats, one motorized, one non-motorized, and one flat-bottomed boat. Our logistics trailer, which is equipped with cot, stands, coolers, food, lights, so that our people will be sustained for seven days. And we are coordinating and sharing our resources with Miko County.
Do y'all have any questions?
Chairman, any questions? We'll gladly answer those now.
I'm just curious. I know that with the spraying for the West Nile thing, that happened. I mean, I'm assuming that it happened.
It happened. It started about 6:00 about Saturday, and it lasted about two hours.
Okay. Y'all have any other questions? I know that was all quick turnaround. Thank you so much for all that you do.
Thank you, Denise.
That'll be all for the time.
Okay. Then we'll move on to our committee of the whole report. The committee of whole met in the main conference room at the administration building on Monday, August 27th at 6:00. You guys have got a written report in your packet. The first item addressed was log number 101. Prison ministry staff will be gathering more information about cost, about moving the chapel, and will report back to council. There was no action taken by the committee. Next item was log number 98, the public transportation survey, and there was no action taken. The next item was log number 55, review of fire board in districts. The committee recommended empowering the board to begin structure and report back to council, so there was no action taken there. The next item discussed was log number 100, discuss employee engagement survey. As recommended, that Lisa Bryant, Director of Human Resources, moved forward to begin formulating the employee engagement survey and report back to council for the review, and so there was no action taken there. And the last item discussed was log number 91, update on the Twin County partnership with a district calls rule. The council will move forward on extending invitation to the district calls rule to come visit, but there was no action taken. That concludes our committee of the whole report for August the 27th. On to council correspondence. The committee whole is going to meet Monday, September the 17th at 6:00 PM in the main conference room of this facility. Our next council meeting will be Monday, October 1st at 6:30 PM in this Ottawa, Tewham. As Mr. Wilson had mentioned, our litter blitz takes place on the 21st. I'm hoping that we're going to do bigger and better than what we did this last time, which was over 17 tons of trash, so that was awesome. The sesquicentennial 150th celebration is October 5th and 6th, including a time capsule opening at 2:00 PM at the Pickens County Courthouse. October 6th is the sesquicentennial celebration. Kicks off with a 5K that morning at 9:00. Opening ceremony for the festival with main stage opening vendors, all kind of stuff. That happens at 11:00, and there'll be a fireworks finale currently scheduled for around 8:00. Is there any other council correspondence? Okay. Seeing none, we will move on to motion period and new business. So first on this, I guess with the, we had something happen pretty quick with the finding out about the West Nile virus. And we operated under our ordinance number 526, establishing the conditions and procedures for the declaration of a state of emergency within Pickens County. Now, I want to commend our staff, Mr. Wilson, of course, the emergency services. We'd like to put forth a resolution basically confirming the emergency response to Pickens County to the report of the infection incident in Eastlake. And do I need to read this whole thing, Mr. Roper?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I think you should.
All right, I will. Whereas Pickens County, South Carolina is a political subdivision of the state of South Carolina, and as such, has powers granted to counties by the constitution and the general laws of the state of South Carolina. And whereas pursuant to South Carolina Code Sections 34, 30-4-80, and 4-9-130, as well as Pickens County Ordinance 526, the county is authorized to take immediate action on a matter arising as an emergency and/or involving exigent circumstances. And whereas on September 7th, 2018, the county was notified by South Carolina DHEC of a confirmed instance of West Nile virus in the municipal limits of Eastlake. And whereas the officials of the city of Eastlake, county of Pickens, and the state of South Carolina concurd that the best course of action was to immediately notify the public as to provide for spraying of an insecticide as a preventative measure to protect life and safety of the residents in the immediate surrounding areas. And whereas the county administrator acted prudently and diligently, diligently in all respects, did authorize the expenditure of county resources to accomplish this recommendation and thereby meet the demands of the situation. Now, therefore, be it resolved by county council of Pickens, South Carolina, that the infectious incident that was identified on Friday, September 7th, 2018, was a public health emergency and that the expenditure of county resources was an appropriate response to said emergency and is hereby fully validated and authorized under the provisions of applicable state and county legal authority.
So, Mr. Chairman, if we could have a motion to add that resolution to the agenda?
I would like, I'll make a motion to add this resolution to the agenda. Second by Councilman Bowers, any discussion on adding that? All those in favor signify by raising your hand.
And now a motion?
Now, we can make a mo, now, somebody, you may want to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Councilman Whitehurst makes a motion to approve this resolution as presented, seconded by Councilman Bowers. Is there any discussion?
Yes. You did a great job. This is a very quick situation. Mr. Attorney, did we cover everything properly? As, you know, what we put together of urgency before, is this working correctly as it should? It seemed like, because we went down to the fourth person, and that's part of why we do that. Because there wasn't, normally it would be done by a chairman or vice chairman, but because of the timing, it was, it went through that. Everything seemed to go really well with it.
Yeah, I think so. I think that this is an incident, incidence where the council planned ahead. They passed an ordinance that gave us a clear procedure. We followed that procedure. Your action tonight kind of puts a bow on that, and we know we're prepared for the next one.
I thought it was really well handled, guys.
Thank you.
Really, and also informing us of what was going on at the same time. We were not out of the loop at this at all.
That goes back to our emergency services staff. I really appreciate what they did.
Any other discussion? All those in favor passing the resolution as presented, please raise your hand. Motion carries. I'd also like to add Project Print to executive session. As part of economic development. Motion by Councilman Bowers. Second by Councilman Feimster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. Is there anything else that we need to add? All right. Seeing none, we will, make sure I do this right. I'll now ask for a motion in a second to approve public hearing and establishment of a millage rate for the fiscal year 2018-19.
Mr. Chairman, if you could gabble that hearing into, to open it, thank you.
Open the public hearing. I gabble. Thank you. So at this time, at this time, do we need to?
Just if anyone wants to speak on this.
If anybody wants to talk about, I know that we had a couple of people mentioned in the public forum. I know that we had published the millage and, I can pull it up here. Basically, the county operations would go up by .5. The bonded indebtedness goes down by .5. So basically, it's a wash. So there is, based on what the taxpayer feels, there's, there's, there's no increase. There is a 2.9 difference on the Vineyards Fire District, and if you guys could, Mr. Roper, could you explain that part to us?
Yes, sir, Mr. Green, would you mind?
Oh, there it is, up there.
Needing counsel, the 2.9 is just for general increase on operations that they have at the vineyards. At some time, someone asked that, had anything to do with buying the fire trucks. No, it does not. They still have one more payment on the existing fire trucks. They're 15 years old. The council didn't approve those fire trucks, and we'll take y'all's approval to do that. But this was just mainly a compensation study and general increase, which the millage, the value of the mill didn't cover. And I have an email that we had correspondence with the Vineyards Fire Department requesting that.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else that needs to speak about this as far as public hearing? If not, I will call, I've closed and use the gabble. All right. Onto item number nine.
Mr. Chairman, if you could, we need a motion in a second now for establishing that.
I'll make a motion to establish the millage rate fiscal year 2018-2019.
Motion to establish the millage rate fiscal year 2018-19 by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Feimster. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. My apologies.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you for keeping me in line. Item number nine, resolution to authorize agreement with Pickens County Sheriff's Office for operation of the county prison until such time as a new detention facility is in operation. I ask for a motion and a second before we begin discussion on this resolution.
Next motion.
Motion by Councilman Hudson.
Second.
Second by Councilman Bowers. And discussion on this?
I don't understand the need for this. I don't understand the need for this.
For this resolution?
Resolution, right.
Mr. Sheriff, I was trying to call Mr. Rick. Sheriff, if you could come and talk to us about the need for going ahead and taking over the stockade as a, as a part of this.
I'll let Ken and Sam go with state law. There's a specific, well, actually two codes that you go by when you're going to law or a movie agency like ours, get rid of the stockade and things like that. So we need that to incorporate the staff is our main thing, incorporate them to our policies and procedures and to our pace. And there were, right, there's a system, and that's the main reason for it. And the main reason we need to do it now is for training. Before we get into our new jail, we need to, we've already started switching out some people, and so we know what each other is doing, and then train them through our system. And the second way is the facilities that will be consolidated because we save us some money. So that's the overall goal and point we're having to put all this together. And Ken needs to go into the legal part even more. Would be a good explanation.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Sheriff. Sheriff Clark, you've got me doing it now.
Sorry. Can you get on the hand?
The other aspect is just so that it's, there's a predictable timeline in place. There's a clear understanding among all the parties when the sheriff has custody of White County facility, when the jail actually turns over, the new jail turns over to his custody and control. And at what time does the stockade, the buildings, the grounds there come back to the county? Managing that timeline, because I think the sheriff understands that, the administrator understands that timeline, but we need to plan as if some, you know, hope this is okay. If Sheriff Clark struck by lightning tomorrow, we, we want to know that the subsequent successor to that job is going to understand in writing what the agreement was, the reason we were doing this and the timeline we're operating. So from a legal standpoint, that's why I recommended that we have a written document in place.
When is our scheduled time for the new detention facility to be open?
The official time is in April, but things are going so well, because nobody ever gets to say that about a jail. But if everything's going so well, we may be in March, or well, I think we'll at least be training in March. Let's put it that way. We're actually on or ahead of schedule.
Other questions?
Yeah. Obviously, no disrespect. I asked this question at committee meeting, and you pretty much said the same thing. It's about training officers. And my question was, what does training officers have to do with? Because you're not training officers at the stockade, you're training them at the jail. And why do we have at this point to give the jail over to you to run and control? You've got enough to run right now, training people on the LEC. And so I really don't understand the whole concept of why we have to do this. But I do understand one of my, my big issues is this deal with the church out there. And I don't know how much of the public is aware of this, but it's a very big issue in my heart. And I feel like that's the one thing we have right now, because we don't know where that's resolved. And my understanding of this council was, until we had that resolved, is how we were going to address the issue of that, we weren't going to turn this jail over, because once we turn it over, it's done. We've lost any control to have any effect on anything that happens out there. And that is one of my main concerns. I haven't, number one, found a reason that says why you have to have this now. You know, when you're running the LEC and training guys, you're taking over the LEC to train, I mean, not training it with the jail. They come over there to train. And this issue with this church that's going to hopefully be built out there or have something done with that, that is my concerns, and I will not be voting in favor of this for that. And I feel like as the council, once we do that, we're going to lose any control we have over this. And I think that's the only thing we have right now, because this is an issue of my heart, sorry. But I just feel very strongly about it, and, and I'm going to fight every way to get that done. So that's where I am on it.
Well, let's go to point one of the commanding control. Do you think that the person who's going to take these over in this area has to have command and control of their officers, correct?
And so that's what we're doing. They're coming in and joining with us while we have the ability to train them, not the day before this jail comes in, but we know what we're doing months ahead. So we can control and train to what we're doing. They come in under our system, and we're switching people from out there, we've already started coming to our jail, and from our jail out there, so we know that both processes at the same time. What we're trying to do is make another seamless transition as we go out there. And our jail and the stockade is a world apart, 100% different on a day-to-day basis. And that's why the training and it takes a while, because we've got, what, 14 out there, plus our staff, and it's going to take a while, because it's still a different.
I totally understand that, and I don't understand what the training has to do with running the stockade.
Sheriff Matt asks, are your policies and procedures for your officers at the LEC the same as the policies and procedures that the stockade has been operating under for years?
They are not.
They're not. So they're having to learn your policies and procedures. These individuals?
Correct, and we're having to learn theirs, too.
And you're having to learn theirs and find the process.
The best thing about this, we're learning from each other and making a successful transition. But we keep doing that on the Tuesday before, Wednesday, whatever day it is, before we take over. And so that's what we're going to remember.
It's more than just physical, hands-on training in a new facility. We're talking about big picture structure, the whole nine yards, right?
Really, what we're talking about is life safety. And if we don't get this right and make sure people are trained right and understand what we're trying to do, somebody is going to get hurt. And so that's what we see.
I think you misunderstand my point. I'm not talking anything about the training. I get that, okay? They're going to be coming to you, you're going to be going to there. But my question is, why do you have to have control of the stockade to do that? Drew runs the stockade, you run that. Seems like y'all could coordinate training between the two without a problem. The training is, I get the training part. You're going to be trained. It seems like having somebody to help out with that would be good to coordinate with. But what you're saying is you're going to take over operations of everything.
Well, if something goes wrong, who do you come to?
Well, if something goes wrong in your LEC right now, who do they go to? If they go something wrong in the jail right now, who do they go to?
They'll go to Drew.
Is that going to change before April? When they, when they, when they get totally?
It does change before April, because that needs to happen. Are we going to take it over the day before? So we can do all that in one day?
No.
It's a long-term process.
I understand. I understand the training process. What I don't understand is the control process.
The uniqueness of this.
Well, give me, give me your, your date of transfer.
When we have a resolution on what's going to happen with this church and what's going on there, and I feel comfortable about that? It, it does.
Well, actually, let me, let me, let me speak to this. In my mind, it's, it's two different issues. One is the church, and one is the passing over control. And I understand the hard issue. And as a pastor myself, you know, I reached out to four different pastors throughout the community today to ask, tell me, what is your understanding on, on this? And I'll go back to what I said in committee of the whole, which was the church, when Jesus met Peter and they laid the foundation for the church, they didn't build walls. It was all about the, the body of Christ is the people. And what that, where those walls are does not matter. He's providing a space big enough in the detention center. I just see this as a, we're opening up a whole different can of worms by talking about the church. And I know we're going a little bit off topic here, because the issue before us today isn't to resolve the church. The issue before us today is to resolve on the, whether you take it over now. I'm still not convinced on the now part based on the timeline, but I'm not, this isn't my wheelhouse as far as understanding how law enforcement works. This is why I look to Councilman Hudson and I look to you guys to offer the expertise in that.
Just for a point I'd like to, to say, one thing we all have to remember is the sheriff's employees answer to the sheriff. He is an elected official. We have no say over how he handles his employees and their operation guidelines, correct?
Okay. Drew, who's currently over the stockade, works for the administrator, who answers to us.
You can't have two agencies working together trying to blend something when one person is an elected official, and you have no say over them other than budgetary issues, and you have an individual that answers to the administrator. And to me, that's what the true point of this is, is putting everybody in the same wheelhouse. Yes, it's, it's true. The sheriff is easy, has been great to work with, and we can assume that everything will go great between now and whenever we turn the keys over to the new facility and ask him to officially take everything over. But like Mr. Roper said, if, if any of us were to get taken out tomorrow and there's nothing in place, then it could all change very easily. And that, I think that's the point, is this is the time you've got to start preparing. Denise does a great job of what she's doing, talking about everything she did, West Nile, and everything that we're preparing for the hurricane. Denise didn't wake up Friday morning and get to researching West Nile and how to handle that. Denise didn't wake up this morning and say, okay, we got a hurricane coming, let's, let's see what we got to do about that. It's something that she trains and trains and trains. And I think that's where the sheriff really is on this, is if you wait till the last minute to do this, you're behind the eight ball, and it is a life safety issue. That's one of the reasons we're building the jail that we're building, is because the one we currently have is a life safety issue. And you don't want to start a new facility behind the eight ball. And I think that's the purpose for this resolution and putting the timeline in place.
And now is it changing departments? This is a new facility that we'll be training with, too. So if we don't have that base already down, and let's be clear, this is a jail. This is a detention center designed solely to keep people who are charged with a crime inside. We have a duty to the surrounding neighbors and to the duty of Pickens County to keep them in that jail, and only release when a judge sits in. The danger that we put in having outside facility like a church, as much as I'd love to have it, is too much of a risk for us to, to take on as a county, not just as a sheriff. And remember, as far as the stockade, I was asked by county to take it on. It wasn't something that I wanted to do, but I'm doing it because it's best for Pickens County. So we can't continue on with old system out there if they're not integrated into our system. I'm responsible for the security, what's going on out there. And that church is going as much as I love it, but it's going to be too much of a security problem for us, or we're going to have two. problem for us, or we're going to have two extra people to go out there to manage and look over what's going there. And when does it end? When somebody escapes, do they point to me? I'm going to point back to council, because we had something that was a security concern on our facility. But here's the part that really gets me, is, and this, Councilman Feenster sent me a note of a day where a guy found God in the jail, in the prison. And that's what we're trying to do with the things we're doing out there. We're going to have a success rate with people finding God and finding religion and changing their lives and mental health and behavioral health, as I talked about. We can do that inside the walls. We have a huge training room, we can do that in. Those are type things we're thinking about. We're not anti-church, but we are pro-safety. I have a duty to my detention officers and my officers, and that's the number one duty to me. And the second is about the same, is keeping the prisoners safe. And the state fees and having, and creating threats of where people can escape is not good practice, is not good work, and it's downright not sensible. So, that's what we have to look at. Again, I say that it's the teaching facility area out there, and the church will be, as bad as they say, will be a nightmare to try and keep up with. And so, those are type things that we have to say, make hard decisions, and go with the security that we're mandated by all, really, from department corrections to do.
Sheriff, what you're basically saying is, even if we move the jail out there and set it up, it'd be up to you where you took the risk of moving those prisoners in and out for service.
Yes, sir.
If that's what you're saying, by sheriff, I have the same view.
I'm saying to sheriff, that we will not use the chapel that was moved out there. But I am saying to sheriff, that we're going to make sure we stay some lines inside that jail.
Understood.
You made a comment, you said you didn't want to have this, that the county asked for you to take the jail over?
Correct.
Who's asked you at the county?
I can joke.
Is that something?
They'll take where that come from, that would be me, sir. What we run into during the budget process is, we're looking at ways to do things a little differently. Our original budget request was for twenty-eight. You personally?
Oh, no, no, I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about this, I knew that part.
Yeah, that.
I thought she meant like, right now, this thing of doing the timeframe.
No, 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 this is during the budget process.
This is his timeframe.
Actually, as far as the timeframe, when to turn it over to the sheriff, I hate to say, that me and Rick started working on this in July, when y'all passed the budget. We just thought that the budget started that process after last week. And we've learned all this, it's all better off until we get, I need direction from council before I can do anything.
Okay.
Really how this happened is, the super comp is conking out at the stockade, so they had to do, we'll spend half a million down there, we want to integrate into the new system. That's really how the stockade.
No, I'm not, I don't have a problem with that direction. That, we have a choice for that.
Is there any other discussion?
At one time, stadium, as Mr. State inmates may go back, maybe sit back, what's the status on that?
Define a little bit what you're talking about.
Like, the ones that's already sentenced?
We have sentenced inmates up to ninety, well, I say, we, the stockade has sentenced inmates up to ninety days. They either serve well and get out with time, or continue on probation before whatever the judge says, or if they act up or become a problem, we send them to the state. My use of the word do that, there's more to it.
But was it not mentioned at one time, send those guys back? They're not being.
If we, we talked about for capacity sake, if not taking so many stadium rates.
Well, I think we will lower it, because the state inmate system is becoming harder to put up with, the workers are not as good, that's what I kind of see generically across the state. We do see that as reducing, and we've got, do things here in Pickens County, let's say, we, the county has reduced how many it has. So, I think we'll come down a good bit and have a stable workforce, but, you know, as we've seen over the past few years, that things, that it's better if we have a small, concise group, it's hard work to stay inmates, and we can manage and work with.
And one more question. Immate labor is listed here about, where do we need to know that, that's a state status quo, are you in charge, would you still be in charge of that?
Yes, yes.
What would this procedure, you're in charge of that?
Yeah, in fact, Drew and I, I think last week, we looked at a door, a room off to the left, of where we can strip search them coming in and out from work. So, we've already started talking about that.
And one other thing that they did last year, that I don't see on here, and I've mentioned the one employee out there, is the bicycle program. You don't see that that gets done?
For country center.
Yes, the ones from the recycling center where they refurbish them, and like, country had a lot last year, it was very successful.
Yeah, they are sentenced inmates and.
Doing that, and of course, job school and stuff like that, on that. And one thing, the church part, and you're basically sharing us that they will have a place of worship inside of that new facility.
Most definitely. I took Joe Moll's.
Because the cost of moving it is kind of astronomical, just off the top.
Yeah, we're here in two, three hundred thousand of this place.
Twenty-hundred and fifty, two-hundred thousand, what it looks like now.
And, you know, maybe if we waste some of that money, we could have some instruments in our area, and bibles, or whatever we need, to do things like that inside the jail.
Have you considered starting some sort of fund to buy equipment and instruments?
Well, when we get in, we got enough people in Pickens County to be glad to donate that, and so I think we won't have any problem with that at all.
Is there any other discussion?
So, my understanding, there won't be a separate building for any sort of a religious, and once we turn this over to you, we don't have any more say-so in it, because the stockade will then be yours.
Well, first of all, yeah, there will not be another building on there. Second, I think what you're going to see is the same what you have. You ask me something, I'll tell you if I can fix it, or do it, or whatever, and we'll go forward from there.
Well, either way, even if we somehow allocated funding to put a building over there, or we found somebody to do that, he's an elected official, it's still his say once he takes over.
Yeah, he had no say so.
And remember, really, our only place left is for a future LEC, and that may be thirty years from now, but at least we're secured land for it, not count what we're in now.
Any other discussion? All right, there's a motion in a second on the table for resolution to authorize the execution of agreement with Pickens County Sheriff's Office for operation of the county prison until such time as a new detention facility is operational. At this time, I call for a vote. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Unopposed? Motion carries. Onto item number ten, yeah, ten, consent agenda. On a consent agenda, we have the tour of the new jail, and Green Crescent Trails, I think they're going to come speak to us. We got an email a little bit about some of that information today. So, I ask for a motion in a second that we approve the consent agenda items as, oh, is there any, yeah, as presented. Was there anything else that was added to consent agenda? No, that was it. Okay. Motion by Councilman Bowers?
Right.
Second by Councilman Hudson slash Feenster? Hudson. All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Motion carries. At this, in just a few moments, we will enter into executive session after a brief break before going in there. In executive session, we're going to be talking about contractual issues of Madden Bridge, legal issues, legal update with MRR Pickens, economic development for Project Pine, Project Third, did we add another?
Correct.
And Project Print, thank you. Boards and commissions, vacancies for ATAX, Alcohol Drug Behavioral Health, ACOG, Assessment and Appeals, beautification committee, cultural commission, economic development alliance, emergency services advisory board, five district boards for Central, Crosswell, Dacis, Phil, Easley, Liberty, Pickens, Pumpkin Town, Rocky Bottom, Shady Grove, Six Mile, Pickens County grievance committee, Pickens, O'Conne, Anderson Mental Health, planning commission, public service commission, tourism board, work link, zoning and appeals, and the nonprofit corporation boards for Hagan Mills Performing Arts Center and Pickens County Museum. Ask for motion in the second that we enter into executive session.
After a brief break.
After a brief break.
And motion by Councilman Bowers, second by Councilman Feenster. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. And we are adjourned to executive session. Thank you so much. All right, call is back in due order after executive session. The chair recognizes.
I make a motion to commit the discussion of boards and commissions to the next committee of the whole meeting.
Motion made, is there a second? Second by Councilman Bowers, all those, any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. All right, that motion carries, Councilman Bowers.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion, first written in title only, of a multi-county park agreement, special source revenue credit, and further 10,000 economic development incentive for Project Print.